We always follow up.
And I would second that motion.
Okay, and I'm not inclined to make a contingent upon the new license, contingent upon capturing the seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents. I think there are other vehicles for that. So I would also vote in favor. That's unanimous. So we wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you so much.
In your new location, and I can't wait to try it.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Trimmitt, was a motion made?
I don't think so, maybe.
Oh, I thought you said, okay. It was a second.
So just for formality, so no one watching at home, and then these nice people don't get a license, I'll make a motion to issue a new common visitor license for Sweet Mango.
I know we had a second. I thought that...
At 206 East Main Street.
I did for a second.
I was seconding on again. Okay, and I'll also vote in favor, and that is once again unanimous.
I didn't want you to have to come back.
Thank you so much.
That was a procedural thing, sorry.
Good luck.
Take care. You're welcome.
Next, we have one-day license for the tradesman. Hi, Rob, welcome again. It has become an annual event. You can move that mic a little closer to you for the...
Your consigliere isn't going to do any...
Yeah, he's doing all right. He's a law enforcement. He stayed over there.
So there are actually two requests in front of the board this evening. There's a one-day entertainment license, and there's also a one-day liquor license request, which will allow the tradesmen to serve outdoors. So with that, Rob, I want to introduce you and at least say that, Rob is the owner. You've had multiple years under your belt with an annual event, and you've helped local businesses. We have approval to accept a donation from you. As a matter of fact, it just happens to be in this packet. But why don't we describe what you're planning on doing and if there are any changes?
Nope, it's ninety-nine point nine percent same thing as every, the charity this year will be the music room at the youth center.
Okay, good, good.
I guess that's a little underfunded.
Outstanding.
We're not going to cover it, but put it down.
Everybody helps.
Right. And I think the town's going to let me use the leaf dump to help park this year.
Yeah, I'm going to let you work that out with the other departments. Parking is a particular concern. There are two things that have been concerns over the years. The music volume, and you've since made a change since that first year where you've redirected the music in a different direction, changed the layout of the stage, and I've heard great things since then.
Hopefully you didn't actually hear them.
Yeah, yeah. I heard from other people. But we also have worked in cooperation with you if there's a certain time of night where, if we get calls, because a lot of it is foliage-dependent, weather-dependent, wind-dependent. There are a lot of variables that play into this.
And I learned that.
Yeah, what's that?
And I learned that that year.
Yeah, and humidity, a whole bunch of issues that can play into this. So what we have is close communication with you, and so if we ask that it be lowered, we know that you react to that and help us out. I'm trying to think, if there's anything else that we've talked about in prior years. You said you're considering new parking. You have an appointment to meet with the police and fire chief, as I understand it?
Yep, I would assume that the police chief will just keep the same parking plan.
Yeah, I wouldn't assume, right? So, you know, what they do is adapt, and each, you know, each...
I talked to Mark today.
Okay, good, good. So Mark Nelson from the fire department. Okay, so...
I'm going to meet with the town council too about what they want in the insurance rider, full on.
I have that here, Rob. If you can take it, you can take a look, and if you have any questions, you can get back to me or Charles.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? It's pretty straightforward.
So I'll go out to the members of the board. Will?
Rob, welcome back. This is an event people in Milford have come to look forward to every year, and I know you've been very helpful to a number of charitable groups in the past. Being involved in the Special Olympics as much as I am, our kids and our programs have benefited greatly from your event, and I very much appreciate that.
You'll be there again, I forgot.
Yes, well, I just wanted to let people know that we'll be there again, and you always allow us and our kids to raise some money and have some fun up there.
Always behaved.
And they are, no, and our kids, you know, they're of age, and they want to partake, and you know what? It's nice to be included and everything like that, so...
A lot of nice people at the Milford Special Olympics.
I wanted to mention that, and I'm glad you're going to be using the, or working out to use the public property over there. Any one thing you can do to keep people off of 140 is always a good thing, so no concerns, just, you know, good luck, and I hope the weather cooperates.
Yeah, not like this weekend.
Right.
Okay, any questions or comments, Mike?
Rob, I'd like to commend you, because in the years that I've been on the board, every single year when you come before the Board of Selectmen with this event, you're always making improvements from the year before. Last year, if I'm not mistaken, it was the coning on 140 so people could walk safely down, you know, down 140, and, you know, and again, now this year, partnering with the town to go into the leaf area is another example of how every year you work with the town, with the community, to try and make it a great event, a safe event, you know, and a happy event for everybody. So I just want to say, you know, thank you very much for doing that, you know, working with us.
Absolutely. The only thing is, when you learn something one year, it takes a year to implement it.
Right.
Kind of not the fastest process.
So we iterate in the process, and we work with you, and we have a good working relationship with you. And the other thing I'd add, Rob, is that the tradesmen, especially as of, you know, the change in ownership, has done a lot to help encourage local bands and the local music scene. And that's very important to the community. Its roots are in music and bands, and so we go back to, you know, the twenties and the thirties when people were prominent in the music industry within Milford, and it's great to see it alive and thriving. So, and for your part, we appreciate that, what you bring to that venue.
There's a lot of people that should be thanked for that, not just me.
Right, no, no, no. But you provide the venue, and a safe venue as well. So with that, I'll accept a motion.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'd like...
Two motions, I'm sorry.
The first motion, I'd like to make a motion for the one-day entertainment license for the tradesmen on September 1st, 2019.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, and that's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for, to approve the one-day license for the tradesmen for their Labor Day festivities on September 1st, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.?
Can't read my writing. I can't read it either.
Yeah, we got to get you to type.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Music will be done at 11:00.
It's 11 to 11:00.
It goes to midnight, but the music's done at 11:00.
Okay, so let's...
So let's approve it from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'd also vote in favor, and that's unanimous. With that, we don't have any special stipulations on parking or any of that, only that you work that out with the chiefs of police and the public safety folks. All right. And, you know, where the cones are, we don't stipulate. And we know you have a light board there, a message, I'm sorry. It's well lit. Let me put it that way, the light stands.
Yeah.
Yeah, the police lent us that, actually.
Yeah, and we know that a police officer's present.
Yeah.
All right, so both licenses have been approved, and if there's not anything else, we'll let you go. Thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Rob, have a good night.
Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome, have a good night.
You too. Next item on the agenda is Library Board of Trustees regarding an appointment. So come on right up. So I'm going to read a little bit, Ed, and then we can introduce.
Sure.
As confirmed by the Election Council, the State House, the Board of Selectmen are required pursuant to Mass. General Law Section 41, I'm sorry, Chapter 41, Section 10, that a vote be placed for this office on the ballot on April 7th, the local election, and this position is for an unexpired term. The board must vote to, the board vote must occur before a town clerk can make any nominations. Further filling positions requires that both boards meet and make appointments. So with that, I'm going to open up the discussion. First of all, I'd like to have you introduce yourself.
I'm Edward Burda Riley, Chairman of the Board of Library Commissioners, Margaret Myatt, and Stephanie Abyssala, Members, and Sue, Sue, our Edmonds, I'm Director.
Okay, so you have three voting members present?
Yes.
Okay, and so with regard to an open position, it requires that both boards meet. You've notified us within the requisite thirty days, meaning the requirements of the statute. So the first thing I'll do is ask if there are any nominations, names for nomination.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the board met several weeks ago, and we voted to endorse Al Spitler as our new member of the Library Board of Trustees. He'll replace Ronnie Oger, who's resignation necessitates this. We had one other candidate apply as well, but we, given that we had two, we went for the first person to apply. They both were very well-qualified. Jeremy DeLore also applied.
Agreed.
And he is volunteer, that if there's another opening somewhere along the line, he's a volunteer at the library as well, if there's an opening somewhere along the line, he'd gladly help and step into that, so. But at this particular time, we'd like to nominate Al Spitler, who's well-known in the community, involved in the church on Pine Street and youth activities, the children activities, and he's very well-versed in the library and using the library a lot. I think he'd be a perfect fit for our board, so...
Okay. Is there a second for Mr. Alfred Spitler?
I'll gladly second that.
Okay, we have a motion for Alfred Spitler. We have a second. I'll now go to each of the members and see if they'll vote in affirmative. I just want to do roll call because, so for the members here.
Yes.
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 I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. We welcome Alfred Spitler to the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Wish you a lot of luck. I noticed that on, in addition, by the way, I just want to say this, that Mr. Spitler also has human resources background, which is, we know is enormously helpful to organizations of your size, and with the great participation you get from the community, so good to see him onboard.
Thank you. Thanks for your help with this.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, just for added support, I just wanted to say that I've known Mr. Spitler for many years, and he's quite a gentleman, and when he reached out to me, my only question was, how does he feel about our library director? And he spoke very highly of you, Sue. So I just want to say, I very much, no, I very much appreciate that, and he explained that you already have a working relationship with him, so I think it's a natural fit, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck to you. Have a good night. Okay. Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm sure that was a test.
We look forward to hearing back.
Thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, next item on the agenda is Town Engineer regarding advanced green light at the intersection of Medway Road and Beaver Street. And Mike, we have a, we have in front of us your memo, and the first thing that struck me, Mike, was that they said that, in their last memo, they said that they would have it done before winter, and in the next one, over the next several months. And so, you know, this is a, this is a project of enormous scope, and I'm expecting them not to spitball it. What I'm really expecting is somebody to lay out what's being done, when it's being done. We know these are done on project plans, we know, generally done on Gantt charts, but I'm not wed to Gantt chart, there are lots, lots of project management tools, and I'm looking to narrow this down because we've got a safety issue.
Yes.
So, and we also have, I also, I wanted to be clear with you the last time you were here, that we have a concern that the work that's being done further down in Beaver Street doesn't delay or impact the schedule of the dedicated left.
Yeah.
That we break this up.
Absolutely.
So the major safety issue is addressed.
Yeah. Yeah, so just to recap, as the memo says, they, since, two weeks ago, they've, they have taken the plans, they sent them out to solicit bids for the construction. So once they have that, and they vet the bids that they acquire, or they take in, once they vet that internally and they award the bid to a contractor, that's when they're going to come back with specific activities and timelines and deadlines for particular activities. So once they award that to the contractor, they're going to have a whole construction. They just don't have that yet because they haven't, they haven't awarded the contract yet. So, and they're also, they're aware of the fact that the green light is Paramount. Okay, so when that, when that schedule comes in to me, I'm going to be looking for that, and I've made that, I've made that...
Thank you.
I brought that forward to Al. So, I mean, so over the two weeks, they're looking, this week to wrap up the estimates, and then by the end of next week, they're planning on awarding the contract to, the project to a contractor.
When are we scheduled to meet again? It's three weeks, right? Is it, no, I'm sorry, two weeks?
That's two weeks, August 5th.
All right.
And then, like I says, I brought the, made sure the advanced green light is, when that schedule comes in, that should, that should be separate from the other activity that they're planning on doing as well, and then I'll just continue the communications with them and make sure that project is advancing.
All right, why don't we just reschedule for August 5th, or do we think that's too soon?
I think that's going to be real close to having a whole schedule and everything, but I mean, you can put it on there, and I can...
Well, I could, let's tentatively put it for August 5th, and I can reach out to Mike, and if not, then we would go to August 19.
We'll talk, set up the agenda. Let's do that.
And even if it's just a general update, again, to make sure that it's moving forward.
Yeah, I just want to stay on top of it.
Yep, absolutely.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, thank you, Mike. I appreciate you coming in.
Yep.
You look well tanned, so hopefully your vacation was a good...
Yeah, it was nice. Except I had to send out emails to these guys.
Yeah, yeah.
No, they've been pretty responsive. I know what you're taking a while. Yeah.
No such thing.
No such thing.
All right, thank you, Mike. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, next we have the Town Administrator's Report. Rick?
Yes, just two items tonight, just an update with Gonquin Gas and some work they're going to be doing. As you know, they operate an existing interstate natural gas transmission system pursuant to the Natural Gas Act. As part of their obligations under federal law, they need to maintain the safety and reliability of their facilities. They must routinely monitor their pipelines for segments which require attention, address them in a timely fashion. This is to protect the public and to ensure their compliance with federal pipeline safety regulations. Basically, what they're going to be doing is doing a, conducting a variety of surveys, including electronic inspections of the pipeline, which will include surveys to detect coating flaws along the pipeline segment. In addition, they're going to conduct internal inspections of the pipeline, using internal pipeline tools to pass through the pipe and measure and record anomalies along the pipe structure, which would suggest or represent defects such as corrosion, gouges, and dents. Local businesses were and will be notified. It actually started just a few days ago. It involves multiple excavations. At each excavation, they will expose the section of the pipe, install two temporary crawlers on the pipeline at each excavation site, and conduct an assessment. Once the pipe defects are determined, the defects will be repaired, and then the excavation site will be filled in and completed. They will utilize the paved access road as necessary for equipment staging and vehicle parking. All workspace will be located within their paved valve site and paved access road. We expect, or they expect this process to take about three weeks, depending on site conditions and weather. So if you see that, that's what's going on. One other item, I was informed today by Representative Murray that a budget accord was reached yesterday, and the House and Senate were to vote on it today and place the fiscal '20 budget on the governor's desk by the end of today. Overall, statewide, Chapter 70 Public Aid is increased by 269 million. Unrestricted general government aid is increased by 29.7 million from last year. The town of Milford is budgeted to receive $3,243,398 in unrestricted government aid. This represents an increase of $85,269, or approximately 2.7 percent. We also will receive $27,301,939 under Chapter 70. This is a significant increase, 9.5 percent, or $2,368,815. In addition, we're pleased to learn that the town included in the budget will receive $50,000 to the Milford Police Department and Community Impact to maintain a regional substance abuse outreach intervention and recovery program in the greater Milford area. Also, Milford is to receive $70,000 to be expended for further downtown revitalization and economic development projects. The budget, as you know, is not final until the governor signs it. He has ten days to review it. Obviously, any of these items can be subject to veto. That being said, I do want to thank Senator Fatman and Representative Murray for their diligent work and efforts in working to secure these monies for the town. So as the finance director reviewed it, and he was very thrilled with the numbers. So that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right, just, do you know how Gonquin Gas is going to be notifying businesses?
I don't, I can reach out to...
Yeah, let's get an understanding.
But I can reach out to them.
Because we ought to be putting some things on the web. One of the things I get concerned about is, there are lots of scams out there, people representing themselves as utilities. And so we figure out with the police department how we let our community know that these are authentic.
Sure.
And not an opportunity for somebody else to come into their residents' homes, and whether it's businesses, can we get clarity on whether they're just businesses and residents as well?
Yep.
All right, and, you know, I just want to echo your comments, thanking Representative Murray and Senator Fatman. We know that the budgets have to be reconciled between the House and the Senate, and their caution is a good one regarding whether the chance for a veto is possible, so we'll be mindful of that. But we do want to thank them for their work, albeit late. We had a lot of people across the Commonwealth and municipalities sitting on the edge of their seats waiting for their budgets to come in.
Yes.
At this late hour, the 21st. It's not the latest I've ever seen, but they're late, and we haven't seen this in a few years. Any comments, Will?
No, thank you for the update, Rick.
Thank you.
Mike, any comments?
No, just Rick, thank you, as always, for a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have, it's great to see that we have both opioid substance abuse, community impact as priority, along with our downtown revitalization program. I know it's been a priority for this board, and continues to be a legislative priority for state representative and state senator for us on our behalf. Old business, none being listed here. I'll go to the members. Will, any old business?
No, not tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Rick, the only question I have is, where are we with the sidewalk from 109 and 16 up to Quarry Square?
Well, Steve Scotty took care of that.
He did take care of it, but one of the questions that we brought up at our last meeting was, we were looking to have some kind of a...
Yes, I have spoken with...
Schedule put together.
Yeah, I've spoken, it's two avenues. I will have a quote for you shortly. Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin is going to meet with the consultant. They might have done it today, they were reaching out today, not the consultant, I'm sorry, the company that may do it, that did it the last time, to just delineate what we want done, where we want done it. And also Scott Christopher, Highway Surveyor, is also willing to put together a program for the board's consideration, if that's what the board would like to do. But I will have a quote for you with specifics on what we're looking to do.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, next we have new business. Milford Fourth of July Parade, acceptance of gifts. So, let me see if I have this right, because the last time there was some question, Celebrate Milford, Fourth of July. Miscellaneous donations adding up to $1,000, and then Milford Fund Zone, also $1,000 from one specific business, and we appreciate their generosity, as well as Asphalt Engineering LLC, $50. So, Rick, I take that to be $2,050 as a total. Is there anything else for Celebrate Milford?
$1,050, did you look at the second one by Mr.?
Yeah, $2,050 total, total, net, net. So that's what I'm going to ask, and you know what, so that this doesn't come up again, if we could just get all donations totaled on one sheet?
Okay.
Because right now, what we've got is $1,000 here. See, Rick?
Okay, I think that's G...
Is that a duplicate of the first $1,000?
Maybe I'm missing a sheet, sorry.
I think it's supposed to be $1,050.
Yeah.
Let me, let me give you these two.
My sheet, sorry. Thank you. Oh, yeah, no, this is actually the next one, G2.
Okay, good, good. All right, so...
$1,050 total.
$1,050, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the $1,000 from PINS and the $50 from Asphalt Engineering, totaling $1,050 for the Fourth of July Parade.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next we'll have Celebrate Milford, and I see a total amount of $1,000.
Yes, so motion to accept.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next we have acceptance of gifts for the Milford Youth Center, and I'll read the letter that we received from Jen Ward, the director of the youth center. Dear Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen, I'm writing you on behalf of the Milford Youth Commission to inform the board of recent donations made to the youth center. Every year, we receive donations that help make camp available for local youth in need. It is possible to sponsor an individual camper or a family. We would like to extend a thank you to the following who have contributed. Unibank, in the amount of $1,000. Milford Federal Bank, in the amount of $1,000. Milford Rotary Club, the amount of $1,000. Jay's Classic Barber Shop, who hosted the 2018 basketball tourney, $700. There were two anonymous donations from Milford residents in the amount of $560. There's Home Field Credit Union, in the amount of $300. Grace LaValle, in the amount of $53, and Elaine McNana, $53, for a total of $4,666 for scholarships to help folks go to camp during the summer. Actually, I shouldn't say during the summer, it could be any part of the year. And so I'd ask that a motion be made?
So move to accept the total of $4,666 to the Milford Youth Center?
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. And Rick, just to make sure communications are not lost between the youth center and the town, I say the town, the Board of Selectmen, just arrange whoever sends out those letters. It would be customary that they do it in this case, or that the Board of Selectmen send out letters?
They always send out letters. I'm pretty sure probably Jen does do, we always do from the board.
Can't get too many, okay.
Yeah, we do.
Next we have a request from Cafe Sorento for a one-day license. As is customary, the Cafe Sorento holds a fundraiser as a clam bake, and they do it for the U.S. Marine Building Fund, worthy cause. It's, they use the Bow Street parking lot, and this one is a request for September 8th, 2019, on a Sunday, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's an all-alcoholic license is the request.
Make a motion to approve.
I would vote second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I would vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, do we have any correspondence, Will?
No, thank you.
I do not have any either, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't have any either, so it looks like, since there's no official correspondence listed here, and none of the members having any correspondence to read or communicate, we'll go to the next section, which is executive session. The board's intention to go into executive session to discuss with council regarding Heller et al. to Milford pursuant to General Law 30A, Section 21A, 3, and 7, as well as Suffolk Construction versus D-Cam. Along with that, there are two other topics. One is meeting with town council to discuss the Verizon cable contract, and town council regarding litigation. I'd ask that the motion be made to go into executive session?
So moved.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next I'll take a roll call vote. I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous, next I'll take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, also vote or indicate affirmative, so the Board of Selectmen, it's my duty to indicate that the Board of Selectmen will not be returning to open session. Thank you very much, and good evening.